Good morning. I'm going to call our meeting to order for commission meeting for March 26, 2024, and note that we have a full quorum of commissioners here. Before we get started, check my own phone. Make sure it's on silent, avoid embarrassment. And if you plan on speaking today, there's a sign up in the back of the room. Really like to have your name for public records so we don't have to go looking for you later. Ask you to stand now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to our routine business. Look for, consider a motion to approve our agenda. Second. Motion by Bender, second by Benega. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Moving on to our consent agenda. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on our consent agenda? Our consent agenda is our routine business, personnel actions, bills to be paid, that type of thing. Anybody want to comment on it? Moving on then, any commissioner would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing nothing, I would look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kipley, second by Blindberg. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. All right, moving on now to our regular business. We have a public hearing and second reading on zoning ordinance amendment number 2401 to clarify long-term lease or rental of property in Minnehaw County. Good morning, Scott.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, planning director. And as you indicated, this is a public hearing on a request to amend our zoning ordinance. This is basically some clarification and some cleanup. It would be adding an article or a section to Article 12, Article 12.19, which for the audience and the people at home, basically says, or actually says, "Long-term lease or rental. It is not the intent of the ordinance to prohibit long-term lease or rental of property so long as such use is otherwise lawful." This, like I indicated, is basically some clarification in our zoning ordinance that indicates that we allow the long-term lease of properties, like farm leases, leases of homes that might be like a year-long lease, lease of mini storage units. There's many different types of property that is not owned but is rented or leased to properties or other people. So I'd be glad to answer any question, but this has gone to the Planning Commission. It's been reviewed by the state's attorney. We've had it reviewed by like the home builders and they're fine with it as well. So I don't see any issues with it, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Commission questions from Scott. All right, this is a public hearing. So first, we would take proponents of this amendment to the zoning ordinance. Anybody here to speak as a proponent? All righty, anybody here to speak as an opponent, opposed to the change? Since we have no opponents or proponents, we don't need a rebuttal. I will turn it over to the commission for action and our discussion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Public hearing to consider solid waste permit number 2303 for Delta Wood Products tree grinding operation. Kevin, good morning.
Good morning, I am Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. Delta Wood Products has submitted an application for solid waste permit at the property located at the southeast quarter, except the county addition lot H1 and R1 of Section 14 Township 102, Range 49 West Mapleton Township, located at the corner, at the intersection of 467th Avenue and 84th Street. The Minnehaw County Solid Waste Ordinance defines tree branches and similar materials as rubble, and a rubble site is where rubble is deposited. Recent tree grinding operations has brought up the require, or raised awareness for the staff that a need for a solid waste permit is in addition to a conditional use permit. This operation has been permitted since 2019 by a conditional use permit, and now they're obtaining their solid waste permit. The original tree grinding operation permit was, includes a sunset that requires a reapplication or removal of the operation by January 2029, which is just shortly before the, if this gets approved, the solid waste permit will be needing to be renewed. So it'll kind of work in tandem from there on if it continues on. The state does not, D A and R does not require state license or solid waste facility at the site because the petitioner is only allowed to accept clean, untreated, unpainted, and unstained wood. Planning staff has reviewed the materials to ensure that the permit complies with the solid waste ordinance, and action is needed to either approve or deny the solid waste permit 2303 for Delta Wood Products. And I have up here on the screen the site plan that was submitted actually with the, both the conditional use permit and for this application here. I have visited the site and I apologize, I don't have photos, but the berm is installed here with the trees, and it looks like he is maintaining the site location at that area. So he's not exceeding his boundaries. And it looks also, the applicant also has a gravel driveway as required by the permit. Is there any questions?
Questions from the commission. I have one, Scott. Is the owner of the land also the owner of the tree grinding operation?
No, in this case, the site is a leased location.
Thank you. All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so we would first take proponents to the solid waste permit. So if you are in favor of granting a solid waste permit, this would be your opportunity to address the commission. All right, we will take opponents to the solid waste permit. If you are opposed to a solid waste permit being granted, now is your opportunity. Good morning, just need your name and please sign in too.
I have signed in, my name is Amy Johnson. I'm not for or against, but I just wanted to give some information related to this subject. I encourage the staff and the commission to look into South Dakota Article 74, excuse me, 74270701, which is the article that defines rubble as stone, brick, concrete, or similar inorganic material excluding ash, waste, tires, trees, yard waste, and regulated asbestos-containing waste materials. I don't know this business, if they grind and then sell their product as fuel, but there are laws on the books for an RDF facility, which is a refuse-derived fuel facility, and those do hold different regulations versus a rubble dump in the state of South Dakota. This is an issue that's come up before, and I think that now is the time for the county to address it. So again, not for or against this business as I do not know anything about it, but I do encourage the county to look into this further.
Thank you. Any other opponents to, that would like to speak to this item? All right.
Glenn Firstenberg, 46524, 267th Street. I agree with what Amy has said. Also, I would like to address the zoning of being A1 ag. You know, these tree grinding operations are industrial operations. They're not, they should not follow under the classification of A1 ag. They pay very little in property taxes. They do, in some cases, you know, over a million dollars of business. I think they should be held to the same standards as every other industrial business and apply accordingly. You know, fire dangers are out there, they have road wear, everything else that goes along with it. So I think, I think it's time that we step up and look at these things for what they are, or else they're just going to keep moving in and all operate their businesses as A1 ag pay very little in property taxes. I think right now it's like $25 an acre that they pay in property taxes. I'm sorry, but I pay a lot more than that in my private residence, and I think they need to be held to those standards. Thank you.
All right. Any other opponents to this solid waste permit? All right, I will turn it over now to the commission for discussion and action. I have a question for you, Kevin. In your briefing memo, you wrote, I believe this is maybe not written by you, but the state D A and R has explained that they do not require a state license for this type of solid waste facility due to the fact that the petitioner is allowed only to accept the clean. I mean, has that been reviewed at that level? And they agree with the way that we are applying our local ordinances to the state statute?
Well, I guess I would say that our local ordinance and state ordinance, the definition for rubble is different. I did bring the definition for rubble and the solid waste ordinance for the county includes stone, brick, concrete, soil, tree branches, or similar material excluding incinerator ash, asbestos-containing waste materials, petroleum contaminated soils, and asphalt. So that would be the definition that we are working on for local requirements.
Okay?
Mr. Chair, I would just kind of echo those sentiments at Planning Commission last night and at prior, I think we've just gotten some feedback that we're getting kind of, we're mixing up jurisdictions and definitions. And so a state definition on what rubble is, isn't going to be the controlling definition for how we defined our terms in the local zoning ordinances. And so, and then just kind of the history and tradition on this has been that we've used A1 agriculture and those definitions. So some of the public feedback has been very intelligent and logically consistent in and of itself, but it's used just kind of sampling like tax definitions for how a property tax would be defined for certain things. And those tax and equalization elements are assessed value elements are going to be different than zoning. So if we just kind of keep our definitions consistent, that's been our tradition here is to use these rubble dumps is the definition we've used, and it's been in A1 agriculture. So that's just kind of being responsive to some of the feedback that we've gotten. But otherwise, I see no issues with this. But I just wanted to make clear, and I appreciate Kevin bringing up that the local definition is what controls our local ordinance. That is a policy question, we could decide to rezone or change our own definitions on things, of course. But as a matter of history, this is how we've handled these in the past.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other questions or comments? Commissioner Benega.
Kevin, have we had any complaints or concerns from the area neighbors since this was awarded in 2019?
No, I'm not aware of any complaints from neighboring property owners. I know that Mapleton Township grumbled a little bit, I'll pull them out, I was here, about people driving across 84th Street because that's a township road. That's a hard one to, I guess, control because the people that are bringing wood are not necessarily employees of Delta Wood Products. There are people coming from that direction, and it's a public road, so.
Thank you. All righty, I guess personally, I hear the argument for zoning it industrial, but I would be extremely reluctant to do that because once it's zoned industrial, it's zoned industrial. And we could have a slaughterhouse there, a meatpacking operation. You could have all sorts of different industrial uses. You know, that land in value probably would change drastically if that had to be rezoned industrial from ag. And then the outcry from the neighbors would probably be extremely great. So I'm in favor, and I understand that we do ag and we do a conditional use permit, and we do it in comportment with our rubble dump definition. So yeah, I prefer to keep it all the same way and everybody being under the same rules, so. Other comments or action?
Sorry. I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any other comments? Call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kerski?
Aye, motion carries. Authorize the chair to sign professional legal services agreement for drug and alcohol involuntary commitments. Good morning, Tom.
Right, good morning, Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer. This agreement, as was noted in the title, is for professional legal services. It's with English Law, Jennifer English, providing services, drug and alcohol involuntary commitments. Those are court-appointed commitments, so she handles all those that are petitioned through the courts. The provisions of this contract, it's an $84,000 contract with a two-and-a-half percent escalator after one year. It includes provisions for backup in the event that she's unable to attend or if she's on vacation or sick or things like that. It also provides for, there's also a reporting requirement in it. So this particular contract is similar to one that we've had with Ms. English since 2020. So I would urge your approval of this contract. And Ms. English is here if you have any questions.
Who's I don't think I've ever met.
Yes.
Okay. All righty, questions for Tom? All right.
I think Ms. English would like to speak if that's okay.
You bet, I was just going to ask for public comment, thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you for having me here today. When the idea for having a contract to handle the IVCs came up in 2019, I was a baby lawyer. I'd only been practicing for about 18 months at that time, and I jumped at the chance to have consistent work and a reliable paycheck every month. I was thankful to have been one of the lawyers selected to participate in that pilot program the county was implementing. Over that first year, there were several hurdles and some adjustments, but overall, I enjoyed the work and was able to fill in as needed. We, at that time, we had four different attorneys that handled these. When the first contract came to an end in 2020, I was approached by the county to take over all of the IVCs. And I was so excited to continue doing this work and ensure that every petitioner and respondent that came through this process was treated with respect and dignity. As you remember, I took over doing all of the IVCs as COVID started. We had to adjust our processes, figure out ways to make this work, and we did. Beth and Jim at Old Detox were so easy to work with. We adjusted where we needed to, and we made sure that anyone that needed help got the help they were asking for. When the Link opened in 2021, they had a lot of growing pains. I worked with the staff at the Link and at Avera as a good community partner to help them navigate this process that can sometimes be confusing. Over time, it became clear that my contributions to helping make the Link's success were not wanted, they were not respected. This is evidenced by judges contacting me to answer questions that the Link had asked them, that I had already answered for the Link, or when they changed the law without consulting me, or even telling me it was too late. From the time the Link opened in 2021 until my solo contract was renewed in 2022, I provided approximately 300 hours of free legal advice and sat in on countless meetings to ensure that the IVC process continued to run smoothly. When I came to the county requesting additional compensation for the hours I had put into ensuring the Link's success, I was told that the county was not interested in paying me for those services and to just tell the Link no, when they wanted me to sit in on meetings on how to make this process work for them. So I did say no. But the problem is, is that I'm still providing services to the Link and the county that are outside the scope of my contracts. I've spent time acting as a social worker, making sure people are set up for their bed dates. I've made arrangements for people who can't be at the Link but need to be somewhere safe to detox. I've called around to ensure that information provided to me by the Link is accurate. These are outside the scope of providing legal services to the petitioners. But if I don't do it, no one's going to do it. And then these vulnerable people will slip through the cracks. And we've already had enough people slip through the cracks since the Link has opened. I understand that the county is wanting to ensure that they are still getting the best bang for their buck. And there's always been a clause in the contract about providing an accounting of each, of time spent on each case, but Carol had never asked to see that information. A breakdown at the end of the year of approximately how much time was spent per case was sufficient. Prior to the Link opening, that was about two to three hours per case. Now it's between five and 10 hours. The legal process itself has not changed, but the amount of work that I do outside of the legal process has. When I started talking to Tom about renewing this contract, I had asked for two things, believing that it would continue to be executed in the same way. The first was a cost of living raise commensurate with the increase to court-appointed attorneys. The second was to have two weeks off a year where I was not responsible for paying another person. I had asked for this because I work all the time. I worked while I was in the hospital, being treated for a PE blood clot in my lung. I've worked while I was on vacation. I've worked when family members have passed away. I even worked while paying somebody else to be me because the Link had questions. In fact, the Link wants to be able to call me on weekends to ask questions about IVCs. I was told that the county would not approve any time off, and the cost of living raise would still be less than what court-appointed attorneys was. And then I was told I would need to now provide an accounting of every case and how much time I spend on it. Here's the thing, I'm really good at my job. The courts will tell you that, the community partners will tell you that. I'm really easy to work with, and I get things done. I'm the expert in the state on these cases and know the law backwards and forwards. I am the person that other attorneys call when they get appointed to one of these cases in other counties because they don't know what to do. I'm fair and families trust me. Renewing my contract this year has shown that not only does the county not trust me to be providing services at an extremely discounted rate, but they don't value my contributions to this community by allowing me to take time off without it causing my family to financial hardship. For context, I've been tracking my time for the last few days in order to get into the habit for when this new contract starts. Just yesterday, I billed 4.7 hours or $540.50 per the court-appointed attorney rate during a blizzard, and that was a pretty average day. So I'm here to say, because yes, I am going to renew my contract for another two years because I do really truly love this work, I'm very passionate about it. And yes, I will provide the quarterly statements that have been requested of me. But I hope that in two years, when this contract comes up for renewal again, that you'll take the time to review how much time I spend on these IVCs individually and come to the negotiating table in good faith and work with me so that we can both feel like this contract is still working for both myself and for the county and for the courts. Thank you all again, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Jennifer. Questions for Jennifer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Personally, I fully understand and I'm grateful for what you do. You work with some very difficult situations, so, thank you. Anything else, Tom?
Commissioners, I would just urge and reiterate that this contract is effectively identical to the one from the last four years. I would encourage the commission to defer this to next week so that I can have a further discussion with Ms. English and hope to understand some of the issues a little further. We have discussed it, we've been discussing it for several months now. Yeah, that's what I would recommend.
Questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I guess I'm open to that as well because I guess this is the first I'm hearing of any issues or questions or concerns with the contract. So I think I trust you to be a good-faith negotiator, and I would just kind of leave it at that, that we can defer and better understand any concerns. But, so I'm open to a deferral, but see if any of my colleagues have more history with this contract and these issues. I'm open to more information.
I would support a deferral, and I'd make that motion. Just given the information that was provided this morning, I think it bears a little more time to make sure that we're all understanding what's going on. And it's a bit of a confusing message to me personally because there's obviously concerns, but at the same time, Ms. English said that she was supportive and willing to execute the agreement that's being presented today, but I don't see any harm in a deferral. So I'd make a motion to defer until our next meeting.
Will you hold back on your motion?
Sure, yeah, I will.
Okay. Any other comments? Public comment on this agenda item? All right, now I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to defer to our next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign, motion carries. We will continue this discussion, and truly thank you for being here today. Mm-hmm. All right. Authorize the chair to sign letters of support for Midwest Street Medicines and Kingdom Boundaries Prison Aftercare Ministries' application to DSS for opioid settlement grant funding.
All right, Tom Greco, Commissioned Administrative Officer, again. So this is to urge your, and recommend your, authorizing the chair to sign two letters of support. So DSS opened up another round of funding. Effectively, 25% of the opioid funds that come to the state of South Dakota then again distributed to local organizations. One of the requirements this round, and the application date deadline for this particular round is April 1st. One of the requirements for this is to acquire a letter of support from one of the local jurisdictions that receive opioid settlement funds. After a review of organizations requesting such a letter of support, we put together an ad hoc committee of senior staff and department heads from the county to include the sheriff's office, public defender's office, public advocate's office, and human services to discuss these organizations' project goals and particularly whether their goals align with or complement what the county is doing, or at least does not duplicate what the county is doing. So with that in mind, there were two that we would recommend a letter of support for. The first is Kingdom Boundaries Prison Aftercare Ministries, and the second is Midwest Street Medicine. And within the briefing memo, you can see the project goals for each of the organizations. So I believe we do have representatives from each here today, so if you have any questions, feel free to ask them. But we would urge your authorization from the chair, for the chair to sign these letters of support, which will be furnished to the organizations for them to include in their applications.
All right. Is there anybody here from either of these organizations that would like to address the commission? They're pointing fingers, so, no? If you do, please come up. Okay, okay, all right. Questions from the commission for Tom or the organizations? Public comment? All right, and then look for commissioner approval to sign letters of support. Commissioner Bender.
I just would like to thank all the department heads and the groups, the kind of the subject matter experts from the county that got together to review these. Grant applications. I think the purpose is that the state wants to make sure that the money goes out and is aligned with efforts that are ongoing. To address these issues in our county. And given their recommendation of these two programs, I would make a motion to approve.
Motion and a second, other comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. All right, a brief presentation by the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. Take all the time you need, Sheriff.
Morning Commissioners, Mike Mills of Minnehaw County Sheriff. I tried to meet the goal of a brief briefing. Sheriff's Office, which at times is difficult with about two hundred and seventy-five employees and multiple divisions. What we thought we'd do is, I've, I've got senior staff here to answer questions that may come up. But in particular, we're going to address and, and brief you on two areas of the sheriff's office. Number one is. Our first one will be Adam Ziska is our patrol commander, the uniformed services commander. And oversees quite a few of our uniformed operations. He'll kind of give you a short briefing on that. And then I have Warden Madsen here from Minnehaw County Jail. And Warden Madsen will brief you a little bit about what our population trends are, some of the efforts that we have underway at the jail. And since you have the power of the purse, which is tremendous power over the sheriff. A little bit of a touch on, on what our budget is looking like. In particular, as you know, if we expand into that. Next floor of the, of the jail that is currently vacant, that we have for expansion. It comes at a considerable expense of hiring additional staff, and we thought we would already be hiring those today. So he'll be able to brief you on that. So with that, and again, if you have any questions afterwards, after Warden Madsen is done. I have Joe Bosman, our captain here. I have Josh Phillips here also, the investigations captain. And Chief Deputy Jeff Gromer is here as well, so we have senior staff here to answer any questions that you may have. So we'll start with Adam Ziska, our patrol division commander, and move on to Warden Madsen.
Morning Captain. Morning Commissioners, Mr. Chair. I'll try to keep it brief, but the patrol division does cover more than just patrol. It's all uniformed, but we do cover many contracts, and I'm just going to go through those real quick, but first an overview. Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office, oh, and there's a memo on this too, so if you want to read more on any of these divisions, please feel free, but our current. Staff is adequate for the needs of the county on the field on the patrol side. Some of the biggest increases that we're seeing in cost are associated with equipment and vehicles. Vehicles is something we've had to come up here and talk with you about, both the lack of. Quantity of these vehicles and the, the, how hard it is to come by them. And then just the increase in costs that everyone else is seeing with our, with our equipment that goes inside of the, the cars. Our patrol division, I want to talk a little bit about a new program we started with the Sioux Falls Police Department. It's called Handle With Care. It was originally rolled out by the state, but basically what it is, if a deputy goes out and there's a child. Goes to one of our schools that has had a traumatic experience, no matter what that traumatic experience is. If the deputy decides to, he can send a Handle With Care notice to that child's school. That child's message that i- it's just the name that they may have had a traumatic experience. That goes to the guidance counselor or whoever the school is designated to, to get that message. And then that teacher is contacted, they're told that, hey, this kid had something going on, we don't know what it is. We're not going to talk to him about it, but we're just going to keep an eye on that student. We have a wonderful SRO program, but this is another tool in our tool belt in case that gets missed by the SRO, that case or that event. To just notify these schools that something might be going on with these kids, so. Lieutenant Leach with the Sioux Falls Police Department was paramount in implementing this after the state stopped pushing it. And so it's run through a city website that we kind of, inter-agency cooperation and we all, all kind of got on board. We have our community engagement committee, this is their third year. They did fifty-four unique events above and beyond just our regular community policing. These were both hosted by us and they were existing community events. We are upgrading our less lethal program. We used to have shotguns that shoot beam bay rounds. We've been using those for many, many, many years. That technology has gotten old, it's deteriorated and it's. Progressed technology-wise within police work. We are upgrading to forty-millimeter launchers that we're able to obtain through a grant. And this will give our deputies that are out there more utility when we're deciding to use less lethal force. It gives us, again, another tool in the tool belt, and it's that technology that, that, that we needed to drive us forward. Fortunately for me, we use forty-millimeter launches in SWAT department and we do have a few on patrol. So I already have trainers to train this technology, so those investments in training in the past. Are going to help us out with this program as we implement it. We're able to do it all in-house, so we don't have to send people to costly or expensive training. We've already taken care of, of the instructor part of that. And our commitment to training within the patrol division is a minimum of twenty-four to thirty-six hours per year. That's a minimum in-service time, so we have three twelve-hours of, of training. And then we encourage our deputies to go to additional training, which they almost all do throughout the year. So if they're passionate about something or they want to pursue something, they're able to do that as well. Southeast Technical College, we have two full-time deputies working there as security officers. Both have been there for multiple years, both are prior Sioux Falls Police Department, and we continue to uphold that long. Tradition of our relationship with Southeastern Technical College. At the South Dakota Air National Guard, we have twelve certified and four non-certified deputies. They both work security alongside security forces that are already there. And they're implemented within the security systems that the air guard maintains, so they're a force multiplier for the air guard. If something happens there, they need quick deployment, our deputies can step in, and if we need those deputies, we can, we can utilize them for our missions as well. That staff helps with our training on the patrol side, so we do get a lot of value out of that as well. And lastly, we have the Sioux Falls Airport. This last year, in two thousand and twenty-three, we had a full-time deputy position added. That was David Hamilton. He is a former Sioux Falls Police Officer. He came in to provide more consistency that we were looking for, and he's done just that. We also had the implementation last year of part-time benefits for part-time employees. And that has helped with staffing tremendously with the airport program, so we like to be the ambassador for law enforcement. As people fly into Sioux Falls, as people fly out of Sioux Falls, you know, when we have the, the rush of hunters come in for pheasant season and things like that. You'll see our deputies out there engaging. There's a banner that says Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office, so if you don't see the deputy, you know, our office is hard to miss there and. And we pride ourselves in that role. So in summary, I'm proud to be the patrol division commander. I'm proud of my deputies, the community-first approach. I'm proud of the training that we provide, the willingness of my deputies to do the hard things as well and take those people that are dangerous and within our communities and put them into jail. And also maintain how well-rounded they are. You know, patrol officer wears many, many different hats. And they're asked to do that on a daily basis. They don't know what they're going to be doing, and so they just train for everything and they do a great job. So that's my piece.
Any questions of the captain? Commissioner Bender.
I just want to thank you. I thought your memo was extremely well-done and it's a lot of great information. I was curious about the community engagement committee and how, how they come up with their events. What kind of attendance you get at those events? I think that's a great way of being out in the community and letting people know that you're. You're real people really there to help.
Yeah, so one thing we, that I always wanted to do was ma- maintain our relationships with the communities, but also the people. Basically upfront, the city administrators, those finance people, I think that's a, that's a first step. So my deputies will stop in to those offices, those cities' offices on a regular basis and try to liaison with them. The community engagement committee, the idea was to allow them to just, just what the commissioner said, to see us a- as humans. So we sit down for coffee, coffee with the cops, one of them, we just had a pizza with the cop benefit. I just had a deputy stop by, a kid's birthday party, because somebody on Facebook had asked us to. Big hit, but it's also going to those, those things that are already happening, like touch a truck in Garrettson, for instance. Or something that's happening that's fair-related, Safety Village. So we want to incorporate ourselves into something, into stuff that's already going on and make an impact that way too. Just people get familiar seeing us more. The sheriff's office has always been community-oriented. This is just, just an enhancement of that. I would argue that all of our deputies are community ambassadors. But the CEC is just taking it just a step further, so whether it's flyers or social media posts. We try to advertise as much as possible and get people those events. Some are really well-attended. I joked the other day in Garrettson, I said maybe it's more of a coffee with a deputy, having coffee with a deputy. Because there wasn't a lot of engagement, but we did get people through the doors and, you know, we'll stand up and make sure that they, they see us there, so.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Kipley.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Pivoting off of that community engagement, can you just describe, you know, for those. Communities that don't have their own police departments, Sioux Falls and Brandon, what, what is that coverage like? I, I, I understand that it's, it's contractual, like with the city of Hartford and Del Rapids, but can you describe that relationship and how that. The practical impacts on your patrol schedules and let's make sure we send somebody to Hartford today for these hours or. And just how you deploy people to make sure we're meeting our contractual obligations, but also just those relationships and make sure. And then pivoting off of that, are there any areas in the county that are seeing growth or, or that you're having to change some of your patrol schedules? And, and we need to shift more resources here versus there?
Yeah, so the way that we do it is exactly like you said, it's a contractual basis, so we'll spend a minimum of the hours of the contract. Some communities contract more, Del Rapids and Hartford being, being the, the biggest number of hours. So basically what we do is we send the deputies out, they know where they're going to be for that day, their supervisor will give them an area. But what we like to do is vary those times, so we'll always do school zones, that's pretty much consistent, and we'll use our SROs for that. But we like to vary our time, so no one gets used to seeing us at any one, one time or the other. And so if a community contacts us, like say Valley Springs says, hey, we're having problems with traffic on this road, we'll, we'll address that. That's our, that's our thing, is we'll, we'll provide the services that the community wants at the time the community wants. So if they're having a special issue or a project that they need worked on, that's how we'll deploy. So we make sure we, we fill those contract hours. I have rarely seen a month where we're under those contract hours, because we respond to all the calls as well. So if we're spending time in Crooks and a call comes out in Crooks, that's what we'll do, but if we're in Baltic, then we'll come to Crooks. And we try to have deputies who rove around as well. So to take each caller, to, to address a caller, back up a, a deputy. But the biggest thing to point out too is, is, is my patrol division spends a lot of time in Sioux Falls, in the city. If you look at a map of locations we've responded to, you'll see an impact on almost every street in Sioux Falls, and this is because we do warrant services. Civil services and others, and, and we'll help with PD as those needs arise. So we spend a lot of time in Sioux Falls as well, and that can't be overlooked, and that would be mostly daytime hours. So we're able to staff our contracts very well. The one city that has looked at increasing some time would be the city of Crooks. They, they've asked, but we address that, we go back and forth with, with their needs, and then they make that decision themselves. And then we decide what we need for staffing.
All right, one other thing, Captain, you didn't address it in here, but so many of your patrol officers are. What's term, emergency medical training certified. I mean, that's just a great service that is offered to the community. Can you briefly talk about that real quick?
Yep, so we have an EMT program. I don't know the exact number, I think it's hovering around fifteen EMTs right now. So the sheriff's office is certified, anybody basically who wants to up to a certain number that we have, which we haven't met. We say, hey, do you want to, do you want to be an EMT? They say yes, they go through the training, they flex their hours, and they get fully EMT certified. That way, when they're the first responder, th- they can do more or enhance the medical care than just the, the average deputies. Who, who doesn't have that training. They carry their own medical bag and specialized medical equipment. We all carry AEDs in the car, which is huge. Those have multiple life saves a year out in the rural, as you can imagine, out in rural count. In the rural county areas. Wall Lake Oil, just over the weekend, we had a deputy who's EMT-trained. Provide an AED application and provide CPR to a person that was having a heart attack, and, and they survived that incident. So we're very proud of that program. We do believe it saves lives, and I think it helps with the, the other first responders have that faith. That, that we can, we can do those, those things an EMT is qualified to do, so it's a great program for us.
It's a great program, great for the community, and I think we pay them a little extra too, don't we?
Yeah, they get a little bit of specialty pay, so that's definitely, that's definitely a benefit. I try to just narrow them in with that. But a lot of them, I think, I honestly think regardless of that, they, they, they do it, and so it's just definitely a benefit for them to carry on that bag and. And be able to respond to those calls, because they might, they might go out of their jurisdiction to, to respond to those calls because they're EMT-certified if they hear the. You know, the, the keywords that they need to respond, as far as a medical emergency.
Thank them for what they do.
Absolutely.
You bet. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Warden. And that's not his first name. A lot of people think so.
Morning Commissioners, Mike Matson, Warden of the jail. I submitted a memo, it's in pretty good detail. I'm just going to touch on some things from the memo. And if you have any questions about anything that you guys read in the memo, then I'll, I can address those. So in two thousand and twenty-three, it was a fairly good year for the jail. I, I have to say, we have an incredible group of officers working in the jail division. They continue to impress me on a daily basis. They do an extremely difficult job and they, they handle themselves very well. We've talked about recruitment over the last couple of years. We continue to recruit, hire and train. Two thousand and twenty-three saw nine new higher classes. In two thousand and twenty-two, I believe we had ten. So to put that in a perspective, a new higher class is four weeks long, but that's not the end of training. There's another six weeks at least on, of, on the floor training for those new officers. So I, I have to mention how, how I, how much I appreciate the effort of the lieutenants. Human resources and all the staff that participate in training the new people. They do an incredible job and it's been continuous without much for breaks. Somebody always has a recruit with them, so. Turnover, we had a turnover rate of twenty-four percent, slight improvement from two thousand and twenty-two. Which showed a twenty-five percent turnover rate. To date, we've hired now eleven, because we had a new class that started on Monday, of four, so eleven new officers so far in two thousand and twenty-four. Staffing-wise, I have one budgeted position right now that's vacant, but I do have five people on military deployment. We are authorized to do over-hires. We really haven't even touched those over-hires because we've been either right below our budgeted number. But. For example, we were going to have twelve people start yesterday. Well, through the background process, that ended up to be four. So we, we do have a pretty stringent background process. I have relayed the message that I will not reduce my expectations of what I want in corrections officer as an employee. And we've held true to our. Stance on the type of people that we want working in the jail, so. Over the last two years, I've reported statistics on incidents that occur in the jail. Overall, there was an eight percent reduction in the total number of incidents documented in the jail. Total number was nine thousand four hundred and ninety-seven. That's roughly twenty-six incidents that staff have to document per day. And it could range from a simple general information type situation to a use-force major violation type incident. We did see reduction in. Reduction or no significant change in a number of the incidents in the categories that I have reported out on before. But we have had some increases that were noted, and I noted the increases in our, in my memo. The number of inmate, on inmate assaults, not mutual combat, not a fight, this was an assault. That increased from a hundred and fourteen in two thousand and twenty-two to a hundred and twenty-two in two thousand and twenty-three. The other concerning statistic I have is the number of staff assaults increased from sixteen in two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-one in two thousand and twenty-three. So we, we try to monitor that pretty closely. The number of new cases that were authorized by the state's attorney's office for criminal prosecution stemming from an incident that occurred. Inside the jail increased from a hundred and. that occurred inside the jail increased from a hundred and forty-two in twenty twenty-two to a hundred and fifty-four in twenty twenty-three. So, for example, when a staff gets assaulted, we're, we're doing a case report and we're gonna prosecute that person if the state's attorney's office authorizes it. Um, same with, uh, inmate assaulting another inmate. Um, so we, we keep close tabs on those. Um, total number of bookings in twenty twenty-three was fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty. It's roughly a five percent decrease from the previous year. Um, and our overall, our average length of stay in twenty twenty-three was a slight increase of, and increased at twelve point five days. Um, for the average person to stay in custody. Um, average daily population in twenty twenty-three was five hundred and eighteen. Um, I included a graph in my memo, um, but what I will note is that the, uh, average daily population in twenty twenty-two was five hundred and sixteen. Um, that's a point zero three nine increase. That's really good. Um, especially, I think I, I, I speak about it later on, um, that annual projection is a two point five percent. So to be at zero point, point, point zero three nine is pretty good, so. Um, the graph just is a good representation of how many Minnehaha County inmates, Lincoln County inmates, federal, state and other county inmates that we have in custody. You can see, uh, that we're trending, uh, the same or slightly down. Um, and as long as we continue that trend, we're happy. When we're able to trend in this direction, we have more longevity in the jail space than we already have. The ability to delay occupying the available space in the jail is a direct result of programs like pre-trial services and twenty-four seven. Uh, and the continued work with the justice system to safely maintain the jail population as low as possible. Uh, when we completed the budget process for twenty twenty-four, we included fourteen new positions in preparation to expand into unit control three. Um, we continuously monitor the jail population. At this point, it is unlikely that we'll have to hire these positions in twenty twenty-four. The new positions for twenty twenty-four will be delayed until at least the first quarter of twenty twenty-five. Um, and the twenty twenty-five budget will also reflect the second phase of hiring for unit control three expansion. Uh, this rec- request consists of thirteen additional people. The anticipated date for initial hiring of these people would be the third quarter of twenty twenty-five. However, the actual time we begin hiring will depend on the jail population and the trends. Um, aside from new positions, I'm not anticipating any large budget changes for twenty twenty-five. Uh, there will likely be an increase in the medical contract to account for their wage increases. The food service contract, uh, appears to have, have a increase of five point one percent, which is the food away from home consumer price index. Um, and I'm also planning on continuing my replacement of, uh, an antiquated kitchen equipment. So, uh, that's really all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Commissioner, questions for the warden? Commissioner Blindberg.
Um, I was just curious, um, where the new hire training takes place for your new officers?
Sure, uh, part of the expansion project that we had, um, we have a brand new big training briefing room. It's way better than our old one, uh, very spacious, uh, updated equipment, so we do it right in-house.
Okay, great.
Commissioner Bender.
Once again, I just wanted to thank you. I thought it's tremendous amount of information that you packed into your memo. Um, it's also, you know, really good news that all the, um, work that has been done across the county, but particularly in the sheriff's office to work on making sure we have the right people in jail, um, is, is showing, um, benefit in that the, the numbers really have been remarkably stable on the Minnehaha County side. It's allowed us to provide services to, um, Lincoln County, to the State Department of Corrections and to the federal government as needed. And so all our way around, I think that, um, that was really very good news and I thank you for that report.
You know, what impressed me, and I'm, I'm sure it's so hard to figure out exactly how many offices you're gonna need, when you're gonna open up the new wing and, I mean, Minnehaha Count- county numbers thankfully are down. But I just appreciate that you've been, you know, really keeping an eye on not hiring if we don't need them, but, um, saving the money for the taxpayers in the county. And I know that, um, from the other counties, the federal program, they're reimbursing us for our operational costs, so it, it's a win-win for everybody. And we have a good jail, we have a new jail and, and you're hiring the right people, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Commissioner Kipley.
Um, yeah, as we look at these trends, I'm just curious, um, on the, the federal government side, is that, is that an area of growth or has there been any needs changing from your federal colleagues?
I, w- we have a great relationship with the local U S Marshals. Um, we've had a philosophy of if, if, if we, if we have empty beds and we wanna fill them, I could make a phone call and we could fill all of them. We've had the philosophy of not doing that. We wanna keep our space for Minnehaha County inmates and, uh, Lincoln County, we, since we've partnered with them. Um, so when we look at that average daily population on a daily, weekly basis, I'm communicating with them, telling them, hey, I can take two more, or hey, you need to move five out. Um, so they, they've been very responsive to any requests that we've had, and it's been reflective in our, uh, our, uh, board of prisoners, uh, revenue in twenty twenty-three. I think Susan's gonna touch on that at some point. So, uh, working with them and managing those beds and not being big just to be big, uh, has, i- i- it's a good plan and we're gonna continue that way.
So it's fair to describe the, the federal side as kind of your flex population that we serve Minnehaha County first, but then if we've got, if that is trending down, we can trend the federal up a little bit. That demand is unfortunately always gonna be there, I guess, and so you can bring those in to operate at that optimal level of efficiency, so.
Correct.
Yeah, I appreciate that flexibility in the operations. Um, and then, yeah, I, I think, uh, maybe I'll save my hard budget questions for Susan, but I, I think this is, I'd be generally optimistic, obviously, all, all things considered, uh, pushing this back, I think is generally good news for the taxpayer and we'll see how we can be flexible, but I do wanna emphasize the other side of the coin. My colleague Commissioner Karski mentioned being good stewards of that, but also when you, uh, when you get a good candidate, you know, snap them up, you know, uh, we ha- we've given you that au- authority to over hire, where if you get a great class and when you got quality people, I don't want us to arbitrarily say, well, we didn't, we didn't wanna start hiring those fourteen people until next year. If you get some good people, uh, I think that helps your whole team and the morale and, and everything in between, but, uh, but yeah, keep up the great work, appreciate you.
Yes, sir.
Public comment on this. Sheriff, any closing comments?
Well, I, I think from the quality of the presentations, it's kinda reflective of the quality of my senior staff. They, they work hard. It's interesting to hear Captain Ziska talk about, uh, the community engagement. I was a young police sergeant decades ago, studying to be a lieutenant, and I was learning about community policing. And I read that community policing are the things that you can do to show that you're part of the community and not apart from the community. Part of, not apart from, and that is so reflective in what I see Captain Ziska doing with the patrol division, uh, and with our deputies doing in community engagement. Uh, so I really appreciate that direction that they follow, that they take, uh, m- much of which is, uh, they volunteer to do a lot of these things and to be involved in that committee. On the jail side, um, you're right, we're trying to manage that number. It's really encouraging to see that through programs that we've worked on with the courts and the state's attorney, uh, and our, our justice group over the years, that we're managing that Ja- Minnehaha County jail numbers and we're not seeing the increase that we expected, we're not seeing the increase that was projected, so we're delaying this hiring. And we're able to fill some of those empty beds with, you know, we're like a hotel. We operate more efficiently when we're fairly close to full, not over full, but we're better. Today, you know, we're right now receiving probably about ten thousand dollars a day from paying customers. That's all of Lincoln County prisoners, that's the federal, uh, inmates that we, that we house and, you know, kinda up and down in their numbers. We really appreciate the marshal's service willingness to be flexible with us and move people out and in. But, you know, it helps at the end of the day with our budget. When, when Susan's gonna come in some point in our budget process and talk about expenses, she gets to talk about revenue as well, and how are we doing with jail revenue? And so those are all important things, but, uh, I, I'm just so appreciative of the support that the commission's always given us and the, the senior staff and the deputies, uh, and officers that we have, so, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff, and to all your staff. All right, moving on, consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office to apply for the Walmart Community Grant Program. Captain Bosman.
Good morning Commissioners, Joe Bosman with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, while we're talking about the Community Engagement Committee, this morning I have a request for us to apply for a Walmart Community Grant Program. We did this grant application last fall, uh, where, uh, cities, counties, state entities can apply for, uh, some sort of award from Walmart where they can go better the community. They want these law enforcement entities to go out and be a part of the community, and that's what our Community Engagement Committee does. Last year, we applied for the grant, we received fifteen hundred dollars, which was graciously used towards our Community Engagement Committee events. Uh, there is another round of funding that is open with Walmart and we would like authorization to apply again.
All right, questions for Captain Bosman? Public comment? Commission action? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Good luck with that, Captain.
Thank you.
All right. Consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office to submit an application for the twenty twenty-five South Dakota Highway Safety Grant again. Captain Bosman.
Yes, this grant application request comes to you, this is an annual application that we apply for through the South Dakota Office of Highway Safety. What it is, it is federal funds that are passed to the state, then opened up to local entities that can be used for overtime, equipment, um, billboards, um, anything that would be used to help you with the enforcement and detection of any speed, seatbelt or impaired driving enforcement actions. The Sheriff's Office has annually participated in this grant and with great success, we can utilize the funds to put those extra saturation patrols out there. We talk about those speeding complaints, or maybe there's a, a saturation patrol, uh, D U I checkpoint. This allows us to use overtime funds to participate in those activities, as well as if we need, uh, new radar units or P B T machines, this grant would cover the costs of those. There is a soft match that is required for the overtime funds, however, those soft matches, something that we just provide documentation that we do these things on a normal basis anyway, so there's no financial impact for the county on the soft match for that. Uh, the funding will be available with the federal fiscal year, so grants awarded would then be funded October one, twenty twenty-four through September thirty, twenty twenty-five. With your permission, we would apply for this grant that would start then October one.
Questions from the commission? Public comment? Commission action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, roll call vote.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to authorize the Sheriff's Office Jail Division to apply for the South Dakota Unified Judicial Security Grant. Warden Mattson.
Good morning, Warden Mattson again from the jail. Um, I am seeking your support and authorization to apply for a grant through the, uh, U J S Security Grant Program. The grant that we're seeking is for body warrant cameras for court security staff at the Minnehaha County Courthouse. That is one group that I did not touch on during my memo. Um, we provide, um, full-time sworn law enforcement officers and there, we have one deputy and, uh, three, uh, corrections officers that are certified, law enforcement officers over there. So, um, we came across this grant, it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split, so we would incur twenty-five percent of the cost of the body cameras, um, and the cloud storage, their software system. Uh, the total cost of the project is about seventy-five hundred dollars. Uh, we're seeking grant funding in the amount of five thousand six hundred and twenty-five and the county's portion would be one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. There will be an annual reoccurring cost for the cloud storage, uh, beginning in twenty twenty-five of three thousand two hundred dollars annually.
Questions? Commissioner Blindberg.
Thank you. I'm just curious, do they, um, when do they activate? Are the cameras on all the time or how does that work if you're?
Um, actually Captain Ziska would probably be more familiar with how the cameras operate. Um, i- it's, it's, uh, technology that's very commonly utilized in, uh, patrol work. Um, and with our court security staff having that function within the courthouse and on campus, um, we felt it was appropriate that they, uh, had the same technology. They, they activate it manually, um, when they are responding to something, it's different than a patrol officer in a police car where there's activation with activation of your lights on your patrol vehicle. It's, so there's, there's buttons on the device itself that they'll activate.
Okay, that's what I was curious about, was if they would be on all the time or, you know, when, when they engage, when that would need to record?
I believe the way the technology works is when you, when they push the button to activate it, it's already pre-recording thirty seconds. So it'll take that thirty seconds of video, but no audio.
Thank you.
Public comment? Commission action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, call the roll.
Blindberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye, motion carries. Consider a motion to authorize Human Resources to schedule insurance premium holidays for twenty twenty-four. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. And before you, with fairly good news, it's early in the year, but our health insurance fund has done well already this year. So I'm asking for discretion to schedule premium holidays in twenty twenty-four if we're above a certain level. So you remember, we tried to have a reserve fund level that's enough to cover anticipated claims, but doesn't get too healthy. Um, there's really two reasons for my request. We're coming off of, um, a claim lag period that's resulted in our health fund being a little bit higher than we wanted. Um, but the real reason is we had a really good January and February. Our health claims were about five hundred thousand below what we anticipated. So I'm not asking for authorization to schedule anything concrete today. But if we end March well, we'd be looking at scheduling a premium holiday potentially in April. And then as long as our reserve fund is over four point seven million during this year, I'd ask for your authorization to schedule future premium holidays.
Questions? Public comment? Mission action?
Mr. Chair, I guess I would have a question. Uh, so Carrie, this is, um, so we feel like the, the balance is truly high, even accounting for cyclical nature of, uh, January and February, past history we've had in these early months for light claims or anything like that?
Absolutely, yes. Our reserve fund currently is at five point one million and I believe that an adequate reserve level is four point three to four point four. And if you go why so high for the five point one, it's because of how drastically low our claims were in January, February. Not consistent with trend, it won't continue, but that's why we're looking at early authorization.
Okay, yep, I follow that logic, thank you.
Commissioner Bender?
I'd just like to say, after, um, being Carrie's liaison for almost a decade now, um, I think she manages this fund extremely well, she's very conservative, which is why we're at five point one right now. Um, but at the same time, when claims experience is not going well, then we've had to go to employees and, um, request premium increases, which has been, we've had a couple of tough years. And so I think just the great benefit to the employees at Minnehaha County is that, you know, that we're all in this together and when, when claims experience is low, then we share that, um, that benefit with all of the employees and we are able to come forward with these premium holidays. There aren't a lot of places that you work where you get that benefit. And so, um, I'm very comfortable giving, uh, Carrie this authority, um, once the fund is over four point seven million and I know that she will lose few nights before she does it and then she'll pull the trigger, so, um, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second, I would concur with Commissioner Bender, my limited knowledge of insurance and the fact that I'm not an actuary, you have done a fantastic job, thank you for what you do here, so, you bet. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a motion to declare the Highway Department 2009 Smith Co. Side Dump Trailer a surplus and authorize disposable disposal by online auction. Good morning, Steve.
Morning, Sheriff. Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. Last Tuesday, I was here, and the Commission approved the purchase of a 2024 side dump. The vendor happened to have one on the lot, so we took possession last week. They also encouraged us to auction this, if that was our intent, because the used market for these trailers is very strong right now, so I'm seeking your permission to surplus this unit so we can get it on Purple Wave Auction.
Questions for Steve? Public comment? After the auction, I imagine that we'll have to come back to put the money into your highway fund.
Mr. Chair, we've been putting language in the agenda items to to put the money into the highway.
Oh, so it'll be automatic, go back into the highway fund?
It was one of your suggestions last year that we're trying to.
Oh, well, thank you. Would make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Bennega?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Consider a motion to accept MacArthur Foundation grant funds for the Just Home Project and authorize the Chair to sign the following associated agreements between Minnehaha County and, and we've got a list of six of them here. Do we have to approve each of these separately, or can they be done as a group?
Either way.
Either way, okay. So we'll take them all as one, then. We have the Urban Institute, the University of South Dakota, South Dakota Urban Indian Health, Augustana Research Institute, St. Francis House. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brett Johnson with Human Services Department. As the Chairman already explained exactly what I'm here for, I just wanted to give you a brief update and kind of history. Some of you certainly were involved and aware. Initially, in 2021, we were invited, along with 22 other jurisdictions, to make application for the initial planning funding for what was called Equitable Housing Demonstration Project back then, and we were awarded that, along with three other locations, which was San Francisco, Charleston, and Tulsa. And so we had, we are one of four, what they're calling now Just Home Projects, that we've diligently been working on for a couple of years. So initially, you guys certainly signed on an agreement to funnel $90,200 to our county for the planning phase of that, and then through that process, that's when they renamed it to the Just Home Project. And before you, today, we brought the modification agreement, number two, which essentially includes that initial $90,200, but now we're asking for approval and signature for the $640,000 to come to us, so we can utilize that in our community to certainly address the housing challenges that we have for those individuals and families who have been involved with the criminal justice system. So through that process, just to reiterate, we, the the additional agreements that we have with the sub-grantees are specific for grant-related activities, as well as programming activities related to some of those grantee, sub-grantees. So probably to reiterate one thing is that these are all grant monies. There is no obligation from the county to provide any match funds or any funds out of our general fund budget to provide any of this additional funding related to this project. If you want to, I don't know if you want to scroll down a little bit, Trish, down to some of those additional agreements, but certainly the the specific role in some of those agreements related to like USD, Center for Rural Health Improvement, they are doing a lot of the the planning process and really hurting all of us cats that are involved in this process, along with doing evaluation of the project. We're utilizing the Helpline Center Network of Care to do a lot of the data collection related to this project. We've involved South Dakota Urban Indian Health to provide culturally appropriate programming related to the population that we are working to serve through this project, along with other additional agreements that we have there. Probably two of the biggest things that I I want to reiterate that's not related to the grant, but we got additional funds to help the Glory House start working on their second phase of apartments that will potentially be open in June, as well as funds made available to the St. Francis House to purchase an additional apartment building, and we're going to utilize those facilities, as well as other scattered sites, to place individuals and families into certainly more safe, secure, and stable housing through the efforts that we're going to provide through this this programming effort. Do you have any other questions for me on this? Like I said initially, we're certainly requesting that we have signature and approval from the Board of Commissioners, as well as signature from Chair Karski, to accept these funds and start working on the project that we've been doing.
Questions for Brett? Commissioner Bender?
So Brett, I appreciated you, and Carrie spent some time with me yesterday, kind of walking me through this, and the Accessible Housing Board has had received various presentations about this, and it has been a long process. It's a heavy lift, you know, people who talk about collaboration, it all sounds great, and then when you really try to sit down and work on a really hard project with a lot of different entities, it just takes a lot of work. So through this, you mentioned that we're using funds that aren't coming through our grant, and they are going towards the actual housing, right? So part of those funds that came through the Affordable Housing Association, I believe, are going to Glory House, and then the other part are going, where it's the St. Francis House is going to acquire an apartment building, and then our, this money through the grant is really going to services, to fund services, to get people into housing, and then to help them in that housing continuum to be successful. Some people need a little more help than others to successfully manage an apartment. Are we are we displacing people through that process? Are there any, we're not going to create homeless people by buying things and kicking them out?
No, I appreciate the question, Commissioner Bender. We certainly, at Human Services, we're certainly not in the business of trying to displace any individuals or families. Through the process of the St. Francis House purchasing the Copper Arms Building, there certainly have, they have some vacant units already in the building, but through the process of them purchasing that, we're not going to displace anybody that's already there. And certainly with the Glory House, that's a new building that they're working on right now. So through this process, we don't want to displace anybody, and we certainly aren't going to do that, but we certainly are working on creating more housing opportunities for those that certainly have been involved with the criminal justice system, because that turns out to be a big barrier to a lot of individuals and families to get good, stable housing in Sioux Falls and across the country. For that matter, yep.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, just asking about, I know we're, all grants have some kind of reporting requirements or things we're going to be measuring. I see, I think maybe that's that's some of the work with University of South Dakota producing process and outcome data. What are some of the outcomes we would hope to see from this? And then if we're looking at this a year or two from now, what would be the data we'd be tracking to measure success?
Certainly, two of the the real big things that we want to see is a reduction in the average daily population in our jail, as well as a reduction in homelessness, certainly related to those that are involved with the criminal justice system. And one of the things that we're certainly looking at as well is the disproportionately represented population locally with the Native American population, and so that's one of the reasons that we brought Urban Indian Health in as part of this process as well. So through the evaluation process, they're measuring about 44 different metrics, but I think certainly the biggest ones we want to see is a reduction in homelessness and incarceration, as well as connection to other services that currently exist in Sioux Falls.
All right. Public comment on this agenda item? All right. Commission action?
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second. Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Blainberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Briefing to discuss the 2025 budget planning. Susan Beaman?
Good morning. Susan Beaman with the Auditor's Office. As we start the budget preparation time, we just thought it prudent just to go over some of, just some planning items as we start that work, and wanted to give you some time to have some dialogue on that. Trish, I'll just work through this, if that's all right. Just a high-level what we'll be talking about today, again, an ARPA update. We talk about that pretty frequently. And then just the 2025 budget outlook and a number of pieces to that work. Just to recap for you, on the American Rescue Plan Act funds, we received just over $37.5 million. As of the end of February, we have spent just under $28 million, of which 2.5 of that has been spent in 2024. That means we have just under $9.6 million left in funds that remain unspent as of the beginning of March. We are required to have all of those funds obligated by the end of this year. We are not expecting any issues with having those funds obligated. I would indicate my estimates for potentially what would be obligated but spent in '25 would be under $1 million by the end of this year. So there, we will, based upon current projections, there will be no issue with spending this or having the funds obligated by the end of the year. Any questions on this before we move forward? And then a high-level timeline for where, how the budget cycle will work. You've seen the slide in prior years. Currently, we're in this timeframe right here, where departments are coming in to do presentations to you as Commissioners. The Auditor's Office will begin the work on the payroll projections with information coming to you in May, with our budget meetings scheduled for June. A couple points, just to indicate, when we get later into the summer, July 2 will be the last date for the Commission to consider any new additional opt-outs. By state law, we have to have those approved by July 15. So with how the meeting schedule falls, July 2 will be the last calendar scheduled meeting if there were any opt-outs to be considered. And then going into September will be the the final budget preparation timeframe. Any questions on timeline? It's pretty pretty routine. We are a little bit later on the budget timeline for the meetings in June, mainly because of the primary election in June, just with how things get shifted around during that This is a slide on population, we that we thought it prudent to share with you, just where we have been from a population and where we're projecting. This came from our Planning Department. As you can see, this slide here is total pop, the the yellow line here is total population for the county. This line right here, underneath that, is is the city of Sioux Falls area, and then these are the more rural areas. As you can see, the population trends that we have been experiencing the last 10-plus years appear to con, are projected to continue. We just wanted to show this to you, just as we talk about the future forecasting for the county and the needs of staffing, as well as different things within the county budget cycle, that this will also probably play into those needs as we go forward. As we talk about property tax revenue, we wanted to talk through the CPI piece of that. In a prior session, when Auditor Anderson had talked about CPI, the number that we'd come out from the state, this year, we're looking at our CPI for property tax increases being 3%. So what's important to know is the actual CPI was 3.8%. So this is a slide showing you the last seven years of CPI for how it was used in property taxes. These last three years, for '23, '24, and '25 property taxes, you can see on the red bar, that it's actual CPI. So quite a bit of a discrepancy between our cap of 3% as well as what our actual was. Per SDCL, we can do 3% or actual whatever is less. This just is another slide showing just the the very big swings in CPI from property tax year, just to give you another view of that. Right now, this is this is actual CPI for property taxes, so you can see these last few years, we add up at the 3%, but we've had a number of years that have had those those values on CPI or quite a bit lower. So that'll continue to be something that, as we forecast, how we forecast that CPI into our our projections as we go forward. Any questions?
Commissioner Bennega?
Susan, can you put a vet? Can, sorry, can you put a value on every 1% that we are above the 3% max the state requires us to live with?
We have done some of those estimates. I don't have them with me today, but we did share them in last year's budget cycle, and I would expect that we would do the same thing this year when we get into the budget meetings. The thing with that is it's not only the one-year impact, but it compounds there from every year from that point on. We have had to use opt-out to help balance some of that in the past, but there's no growth or CPI in opt-out, so that that opt-out stays flat, but the expenses that are needing to be covered with those continue to increase as time goes on.
Correct.
We will include that going for our budget cycle. If you'd like, I can send you the information that we've calculated before.
That would be great. Thank you.
This slide is showing our growth for property taxes. Just to note that 2024, the current year, is what we have as the last year on this slide, mainly because growth is not yet, we don't have a final estimate. We won't get that closer till May, and then the final number for growth won't be finished until late August, early September, when utility values are finished at the state level. But we'll have a pretty solid estimate by by May, when we get into the final pieces of the budget preparation. As you can see, we've had some some changes with our growth in the last few years, where we've had some lower points. For 2024, it was 3.9%.
Susan, I'm wondering if you could just explain what growth is for people, because I think some people might look at this slide and think growth means how many more dollars we're collecting in taxes?
Certainly. Growth for property taxes is the construction growth within the county. It's not market value changes. It's new construction within the within the county as determined within the equalization process through that piece of it. It does not have to do with changes in market value. It's truly new building within the county.
Thank you.
As we get into just some situations or the the state of where we are at the end of February, this is our cash in our general fund, and as you can see from a trends from from other years, we've had, you see decreases in the first part of the year, you see a big jump in April and May. That has to do with collecting of property taxes. You see a decline as we go through to the fall, and you see a big jump again in October, and that's, again, just collection of property taxes in that semi semi-annual process. As we have been preparing for the ARPA funds to to be fully expended, we have been trying to 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 build up some of this cash a little bit, so that as we get into those funds being fully utilized by the end of this year, that we can use some of this these funds to help offset some of that that deficit as we go forward. And these are graphs that you see in your packets on a regular basis, on a monthly basis, but we thought best to just talk through these and see if you have any questions. So this is a slide showing our total revenue for the general fund. As you can see, again, consistent with the cash slide, you see bigger changes in the April-May timeframe, again, October-November timeframe. So the the So the, the, where we're landing for February from a percentage perspective is pretty normal and, and not any area of concern at this point. This slide are, again, is property taxes, showing you similar information. Again, big, big jumps in April and May, October, November for the collection of property taxes. We do see steady collections throughout the, throughout the year, but you see the biggest trend in those months. And then our other revenue for the general fund, again, is pretty consistent here. You can see, you don't see as many bigger swings there. From the, from prior year to this year, we have seen, we're seeing again, interest income being ahead of budget, which is not necessarily surprising considering the interest rate markets. Building permits are slightly ahead of budget as well. Okay? As we get into the expenditure side, you'll see on all the slides here that they're all pretty consistent. We're at, at the end of February, we're at 16.7% of the total year. Our total expenditures are at 16.2%. So we're pretty in line from a, a budget perspective of where we would expect it to be. From a personnel perspective, we are, again, in line with where we have been historically. We're a little under the 16.7%, we're at 15.7%. That can be to position turnover and vacancies, et cetera. And then finally, other expenses of everything but personnel, again, pretty consistent and in line with where we expected it to be. I know I went through that fairly quickly, I'll pause now for any questions.
Questions from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chair? Susan, if you could go up one slide to the personnel expenses. As we're learning that the jail expansion, pushing that back a couple quarters, there's sounded like there's a lot of FTEs in play there that we would have planned in this budget for personnel expenses. So can you just describe how that's going to affect how we go through this year? Some carryover presumably, and how we budget for next year?
Correct. I would anticipate that we would be doing a carryover request for those unused budget funds to move them into 2025 as we are expecting those not to be used. They were budgeted to start in July of this year. So we did a half year for that, for the, the beginning of the, of the hiring.
Other questions? All right, this is a budget presentation, planning for the next year. And we spend the next five months roughly working on all these numbers and looking at them in great detail and depth, so thank you Susan. The fun is just beginning, it's a great way to kick it off, so.
Thank you.
Alrighty, any public comment on our budget planning briefing? Seeing none, we'll move on to our opportunity for public comment. Public comment is limited to a total of 30 minutes, five minutes per individual. So if you do, would like to address the Commission, now is your opportunity, please sign in. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Gary Meyer, lifelong resident of South Dakota, Minnehaha County, and a registered voter. And I have to admit, I've been a registered voter since I've been 18. Never really been interested in politics until the 2020 election, when during the middle of the night, the six swing states shut down for one reason or another, when President Trump had a commanding lead. And when those six swing states came back online, candidate Joe Biden was suddenly ahead. So I'm here to once again, talk about election irregularities. I watched a video that was made at the Brookings South Dakota County Commission a week ago today on March 19th. I would have preferred to present the video, but this board has a rule that videos are not allowed during public comment. So I have transcribed it for you, and I will present it as best as possible. This presentation is regarding the election irregularities presented by Rick Wyble, who has presented in front of this committee before, that does investigative work on election systems. The actual presentation is much more powerful, so at the end, I will give you the website or for anybody watching where it can be found, and I would suggest you go view it, it's very interesting. Rick received a critical piece of evidence from somewhere else in the country that uses the same voting system that our state is certified for. They wanted Rick's expert analysis on whether or not the system was tampered or was secure. Rick says that he can tell you flat out that the hard drive, which this county does use, does conform to the certificate that is published by the EAC, which was the Election Assistance Commission. Four counties in South Dakota also have this same type of hard drive. Rick was able to take a forensic copy of the hard drive and annually boot up the election wear system on a non-conforming laptop. This is a complete violation of the certificate, which required that a trusted platform, platform module be enabled. It would be impossible normally for that hard drive to go off of a certified machine that is communicating with its chip to be able to boot up on his laptop. Another piece of evidence of non-conformity is that he was able to put a thumb drive into his laptop. That thumb drive was a bit locker key that is used to basically allow the, the security of the laptop to boot up. That is another violation, because what is supposed to happen is it should be on an official Delcon thumb drive. And a Delcon thumb drive, if you're not aware, is an official ESNS thumb drive. And this thumb drive is supposed to be serialized and secure. So that is the second piece of evidence that Rick presented. Another piece of evidence is in other states that have published in lawsuits because their auditors, attorney generals, and state attorneys did not do due diligence in publishing the manuals online in the correct, in the court cases, is that it was on page 10, the page 10 of the manual was published, and on page 10 of the manual, the default administrator username and password is publicly available on the internet. If you look on page 10 of the manual, you will see that the password is not redacted. The other manuals for the complete system, including the DS 200, the 450, and the 850, all of those passwords are available online as default. We are also aware that when C Change was in charge of the election during the last few years, the password was "election1". Now, C Change is a former third-party vendor that printed ballots and programmed the Delcon thumb drives used in the 2020 and 2022 elections. And it was universal across all states they were operating in. Now thankfully, we are using, in 2024, we will be using ESNS directly, and they should be changing those passwords. The recommendation is that these passwords should be different for each of the machines. Don't use the same password across all platforms. Can anybody tell me if this is being done? Another piece of evidence that Rick demonstrated is that he could actually log into his laptop and actually get in. And at that presentation at the Brookings County Commission, he demonstrated that. He logged into his computer, and he did this during a live demonstration. So he was able to circumvent their security and default the password to whatever he wanted it to be. Now imagine what a nefarious operator with that information could do to our elections and to the machines behind our scenes that we don't have any, we have no control over looking into. At that point, he was able to pull up the election software, at which point he had the ability to decrypt the thumb drives, thumb drives of any other county across the United States that using the election wear 6.1.1.1.
Gary, you said you had some information that you wanted to share as far as website and that type of thing. Your five minutes for comments are done. Would you like to give the public that website or that public information?
Have you heard a word I've said? It is not on the, it is not the onus of the public to prove corruption in our elections. It is the onus of our public officials to prove the elections are secure. You're really going to have me arrested for a five-minute rule that, which by the way, you put in place, not the public?
Never mentioned anything about being arrested, Gary, we have a five-minute rule.
You told me to finish up and sit down. I am not finished. I know your policy is not to respond to public comment.
We appear, I'm not the election officials.
But I am asking you really, are you really willing? This is evidence against.
I asked you, Gary, would you like to share your, your website?
Yes, I would like to share that.
Just do that.
And I will do that. But there's another piece of evidence that Rick demonstrated that he could actually log into his laptop and get in, and he did this. So at this point, he was able to pull, let me see where, where I left off before I was interrupted. So he could view the cast vote records and ballot images. Can you imagine what happens when a nefarious operator does this, which I've already stated? You threw me off here. So after showing the evidence, he stated that his life is now at risk because the United States is not, I know Commissioner Bennega that you don't care to hear this anymore, you've told us that.
Your, your time is up, Gary, please take a seat.
But this, this information, this software is available on the dark web. The manuals are publicly available on the internet in multiple states, and our elections are not secure. When are you guys going to listen to this? There should be, we should, we should be requesting immediate change orders of ESNS.
Gary, I'm going to talk over to you until you sit down, your, your time is up, your, your.
They have not even updated the security patches since 2019.
You're pirating this meeting, you have five minutes to sit.
There are four counties, Pennington, Davison, Lincoln, and Minnehaha are all at risk.
Respectful of the five-minute rule, thank you, I appreciate it.
I'm trying to be respectful here, please be respectful to me. You have not given us time to present this information, and it's time you heard it. No, I am not quite done here, but thank you. If you get a new thumb drive from ESNS, plug it in. The system is unaware of potentially the fat, the last five years of vulnerabilities that have hit the US.
Gary, your message is being lost here.
But that's another rule that Ms. Bender put in, that you don't follow that rule. You cannot allow your time to another concerned citizen of this county.
That is correct, Gary.
So I recommend you view the Brookings, the Brookings County Commission meeting from, on YouTube from March 19th, and follow Rick Wyble on Twitter. There is a whole bunch of more information, and if you guys don't wake up, it's going to bite you in the ass.
Good morning.
Hi, Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. As you can tell, we are still beating that drum that there is nefarious stuff going on in our elections. And Rick Wyble did present this information at the Brookings County Commission meeting last week, March 19th. You can pull it up, anyone that wants to watch this video. It's on YouTube under the Brookings County Commission meeting. And Rick has had an explosion of people that have tuned in and watched this video. He is at 1.4 million views that have watched this video. This video is also being featured on other podcasts around the, the US. There is tons of information constantly being released about the ESNS machines, that they're not in compliance, they're not secure. There's also tons of information that's being released on the sister machines, the Dominion, that they use in other states. And again, I don't know why we're not able to have a civilized conversation about this, get it on the Minnehaha County Commission agenda. There are a lot of people that are feeling our elections are not secure. The information is coming out, if you look for it, it's out there. The ESNS machines are the machines that were used in the state of Arizona. And I don't know if any of you are familiar with the Carrie Lake election that happened in '22, her election also was stolen. She has taken her case to the Supreme Court, it has now been docketed. They too have had problems with the ESNS machines, the machines shut down, the people weren't able to vote. And it's just one more thing in regards to showing how insecure these machines are, how easily they are hacked. And so as you have come back and said that you are convinced, because the Secretary of State's office has said that they have supposedly vetted these machines, you are convinced that these machines are secure. Well, I think you owe it to the citizens in your county, the citizens that are paying your salaries from the sales tax and the property taxes that we just saw displayed. We're paying your salaries, I think you owe it to us to allow us time on the agenda to show you some of this information. Again, these machines are not secure. And so I'm asking one more time for a spot on the agenda to discuss this information. So going back to Rick's presentation, Rick is also, you can follow him on Twitter or X. He's got a ton of views out there into the information and the evidence that he has found about these machines. He will also be on another podcast today. If anyone cares to listen to it, it's, it's with the, the individual from New Mexico, Professor David Clements. Again, they use ESNS machines down there as well. And it's the Conservative Podcast today with Joel Oltman, it's on at 12 o'clock Central Standard Time, and you can see more of this information for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I have some paperwork, could I have someone give that to a few Commissioners? Mr. Karski and Mr. Kipley already have copies, so just for the other three?
My name is Amy Johnson, Minnehaha County. I just wanted to make some clarification statements and some information for public record about the grinding operations in Minnehaha County. I just wanted to comment that the staff member that gave the definition for rubble in the county is correct, the county and the state definitions do not match up. However, right underneath that definition, for our county ordinances, is rubble sites, a site in which only rubble is deposited. And I think that's where the confusion is coming in, because these grinding operations are taking wood waste, it's not just tree branches, there's several other different types of wood, and then they are processing them. And once they process them, they cease to become a rubble dump. If that business is selling that material as a fuel source, which the business I have in mind is, that is what makes them an RDF facility. And an RDF facility, and this is from MC 1791, a facility which is engaged in the processing of solid waste into a fuel product for incineration, but which does not perform the actual incineration, that's on page four. Now, just to reference, there isn't confusion about state and county ordinances, they kind of go hand in hand. And under Section 613 of MC 1791, refuse drive fuel RDF facilities, any RDF facility must have a county, county solid waste permit and must meet any sitting and permit application requirements as set forth in this ordinance and in Article 7427 of the Administrative Rules of South Dakota. So that is where the state statutes and the county statutes kind of go hand in hand. I just wanted to clarify that. And then Mr. Kipley and Mr. Karski already have a copy of the paperwork I gave you. I'm just going to do a very brief overview of that information for public record. In October, CUP 2351 was granted as a rubble dump under zoning for Ag 1. That was after a lot of community opposition. The business opened January 2nd, 2024, even though components of the CUP and site plan were not complete. An amendment permit was granted to that business by the Planning Director Scott Anderson, which was dated February 9th, 2024, that was nearly 40 days after they opened. Section 1904 does give the Planning Director authority to make minor changes to the CUP, but nothing in MC 1791 gives the Planning Director authority to amend a solid waste permit, only that they can enforce it. Other CUP violations have been noted in photographs taken by the public, such as gate left open and the site unattended, mud tracked into the highway causing road hazards during inclement weather, doing to the hard surface not being completed, and a vehicle parked right away. The violations and operating before the components of the CUP and site plan were complete and without an amendment permit prior to February 9th should be enough to revoke this CUP. While researching tax and zoning ordinances, it came to our attention that this business is incorrectly zoned. They are currently listed as a rubble dump and zoned under Ag 1. However, they do not meet the state or county definitions of rubble dump. They instead fall under the classification of an RDF facility. Because of outside storage of their products, use of heavy grinding machinery, and frequent visits from clients, they do not meet Ag 1 zoning requirements. They instead fall under I 2, which is industrial business. Because the business applied for their CUP under Ag 1, the county did not catch this error. So now there is an industrial business operating in the middle of Ag 1 and rural residential land, which is not in line with the 1990 zoning ordinances or envisioned 2035 plan. The county allowing this business to operate is in violation of their own zoning and solid waste ordinances. Also, parts of State Article 7427 are not being followed because the business is operating under the incorrect solid waste permit. They are not a rubble dump, they are an RDF facility, which carries different regulations. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned. As a taxpayer, I'm concerned that the county is allowing this business and others like it to operate without proper regulation or having to pay their fair portion of taxes. Zoning for Ag One is much less in property taxes versus industrial. We have requested that Mr. Karski and Mr. Anderson send this information to the state's attorney for review, which my understanding has been done, and I do appreciate that. But again, just wanted to make that part of public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Again, Glenn Firstenberg, and I concur with what Amy says. But I also want to expand on that just a little bit. Scott Anderson had called Mueller pallets on the day after we had our last meeting tonight, specifically asked questions of the commission on why this place was allowed to be open without the CUP guidelines being met. Scott Anderson called them that day or the next day to have them come down and apply for an amendment to their CUP, and he signed it off that day. That, to me, is dirty. That is not the answer I was looking for. The answer I was looking for is to hold them accountable. Mr. Karski and I have had the conversation about holding Mueller's accountable. This is not a Mueller thing that's held accountable. This is a county employee to be held accountable. They needed to go out there and make clear that you cannot violate CUP guidelines. These folks are still violating the CUP guidelines. They still are. Last weekend, I was at the county commission meeting, or last week, I was at the county commission meeting. I did not speak, but I was here. I did go after the meeting and spoke with Scott Anderson about the CUP and the solid waste guidelines that were not being met. He, we had a kind of a heated dispute. He asked which ones I was referring to, and I said the hard surface driveway. He brought out pictures, and I can show them on the screen, or you can sure take them, but, um, thank you. And I hope I get this right, but I never do. But anyway, he brought out pictures showing, okay, now we can, is this, is this right? Can you guys see it? Or should I turn it around? Turn it around here.
The other way.
Okay. One more. There we go. So as you can clearly see, Scott shared with me that they have put, that they're done with the hard surface driveway, that crushed asphalt is considered hard surface, that that's as far as they're going to go. I mean, my argument is then, then why did it take till, why did he give them till April fifteen to do that? That could have been done this last winter if it's going to be crushed asphalt. The county commission and the planning zone was very specific about hard surface because they don't want mud on the road. They were very specific about it. And for some reason now, and by the way, these are pictures from Scott Anderson. They're not my pictures. That's the hard surface. And I guess I'm looking for answers on what you guys mean by hard surface. What are the definitions? I've looked it up. I can't see anything. But that, to me, is not a hard surface driveway. And I'm going to go through, again, do I got this right? Turn it. Okay, I'm going to get it right. Again, that's the hard surface driveway that he's talking about. Doesn't look hard surface to me at all. The other thing is, um, so I know, Mr. Kipley, you shared with me that you drove out there on a couple of separate occasions, and have you, but you did drive out on nice dry days, no rain, no snow. You know, I suggest driving out for today to look at the mess on the road. Today would be a perfect day. Tomorrow, at the end of the week. You know, we brought pictures, and we showed you folks several pictures of the debris, the mud and stuff that's out on the road. Also, one of their CUP guidelines, they're stating that they must grind only clean untreated wood. It's clearly by the piles out there that it's treated, treated wood. Anybody can see it. They have pallets that are, that are brought in from overseas. Those pallets are treated with bug repellent. They are grinding them up, and they're burning them. It's clear. You can see them, you can see them from the road. You know, and, you know, and I understand what you spoke earlier about the, in this meeting, Mr. Karski, about that you hold these tree grinding operations to kind of the same standards. But, you know, this is, we have to go with today's ordinances. Amy has done a lot of work on these ordinances, or researching these ordinances. She's got a lot of hours on this. And it's clear that they have to be, I know we don't want to do it, but we have to make those hard lines and say, we got to hold people, industrial businesses, to the same standards. You know, where do we divide that? Where do we say, okay, this is an industrial business. This is an A one egg, A one egg business. We got to be consistent. It's clear it's an industrial business. And I'm assuming that when these guy, these ordinances were made up, they didn't have tree grinders that were a thousand horsepower. You know, Mueller's have stated on their website, they just bought a new tree grinder that's a thousand horsepower. Imagine that. I don't know what an airplane is, but it's got to be close, I would think. And that's industrial. And at some point in time, somebody's going to get hurt. You know, I had a, I was a, the lucky recipient of having a fire, grass fire behind my place. I live on that highway this last weekend. Fire department was out. Grass fire burned a hundred acres in about an hour. Do I need to quit? Do you want me to quit?
Please.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry to ramble.
You're fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Diane Rungy, Hartford, South Dakota. So I am just up here. So the guidelines that have been set were set in two thousand and seven. And so they are not anything new to you guys for seventeen years. So it's just, it should just be doing the guidelines, knowing them if that many different companies are coming up in front of you to do these grinding facilities. And also, two thousand and seven was when Mueller pallets opened up to grind in our county. What?
Lincoln County.
Lincoln County, I'm sorry. All right. Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you. Other public comment? I thought the sheriff was getting up. I'm sorry. All righty. We'll close public comment then, and then move on to commission liaison reports. Commissioners. Commissioner Bender.
Just very briefly, we did have our Safety and Justice Challenge Group meeting last Wednesday. It was a full room. It's just really impressive to see the amount of engagement from so many different groups in the community. And to kind of tack on with the Sheriff's Office talk about community engagement, one of the things that that Safety and Justice Challenge Group has worked on are community engagement opportunities as well, and I have that scheduled. There's one on March twenty-second at Hayward, and then we've got the summer schedule. So I'll get those to Tom so we can get that distributed to everyone.
All righty. Anybody else? I got a couple of things. Last week, we had the Sioux Metro Growth Alliance Annual Meeting, very well attended, several hundred people at it. Tyler Tardson is the president or executive director for that. He's also a legislator. I met most of his staff. They're doing a great job. It's all about economic development in the rural parts of our, not only Minnehaha County, Lincoln County, Turner, McCook, et cetera. I missed a meeting, and I got elected to be the advisory board chair. So I was recognized last week for that. But it, I've been on that board and the predecessor, the Minnehaha and Lincoln County Economic Development Association for eight years now. So they do a lot of hard work, and they're the ones out there bringing or helping businesses to reestablish, grow, establish, et cetera. The other thing today, Commissioner Bennigan and I have a Metro Communications, the first advisory board meeting under the new governance. So we have that in an hour. So our day will go on for a while yet. So we have a briefing on that after that meeting to let you know what happened there.
Mr. Chair, my one report would just be for planning and zoning. We had a fairly uneventful meeting last night, just some items on the consent agenda that went through for both the Joint Planning Commission with City of Sioux Falls and our regular Minnehaha County meeting. And then we also did some further work reviewing a chapter of the Comprehensive Plan, got a report out that we, our Subcommittee on Density Planning and building eligibility and different issues around that has met once and has two more meetings planned to give us some options for pursuing any new paths with density zoning. And I think, and then the reminder, five P.M. today is our joint meeting. We have one agenda with the city council, City of Sioux Falls, on zoning text amendment regarding shipping containers.
So yes, we do have another meeting at five o'clock today.
Correct.
On the density zoning and that type of thing, how will that be presented to the commission? To me, that's a big deal, and I'm looking forward to hearing what the great minds are coming up with. And what are your thoughts?
Yeah, staff came up with a few options of just kind of, not necessarily advocating for any of them, but just some creativity where it's play on the joints on these. But I think the first meeting was largely of this Subcommittee with various community leaders, economic development experts, housing experts, agriculture experts. Basically, it was more presenting to them. And then now, these next two meetings, we'll be trying to pull feedback from those groups. One of the concepts was, if I've got any of my staff in here, accessory housing units or dwelling units, basically the mother-in-law suite or like the guest house. Is that a proper use of a building eligibility? Or do you need a building eligibility to have a guest house or a second residence on a rural acreage? So ideas like that with an aging population, there's some advocacy for that to have multi-generational families live in one lot, if you will. And then there's other concepts like receiving areas rather than just having to move a building eligibility to an adjacent parcel. Could you designate an area? Because a lot of building eligibility might be stuck in a floodplain, and there's nowhere to move them that's useful. Could we more, allow more flexibility in how you would move an eligibility and densely zone in one area? So there's pros and cons with all of those concepts. But I think that's what we'll get back is a report with some expert opinion from the community on what has been a hindrance to development in the past, but what would also be a hindrance to agriculture if we grow in the wrong way. So that, but yeah, that's, I think they have a meeting in April and one in May. So it'll be at least the end of May before we would hear back from that group via the Planning Commission.
Thank you. All right. Non-action commission discussion. Moving on then, we are looking for a motion to enter executive session for the purposes of South Dakota Codified Law one, twenty-five, two, one, three, four, and six. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We will adjourn to executive session. I think is in this room right here because of the balloting going on next door. So, all right. Thank you, everyone. We have about five minutes to clear the room.